Good afternoon, everybody. Today is April third, not April first, so no jokes. I want to welcome everybody to the Franklin Township Board of Trustees' regular business meeting. I will open us in prayer. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and the opportunities to do the work earnestly of that of the township. We ask that you be with those that have been in the line of these storms and have come through and their whole lives have changed. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Welcome to you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all. Sir, we can have a little call when you're ready.
Mr. President, please.
Here.
Mr. Levin.
Here.
And Mr. Mazer.
Correct.
So what's going on?
Okay. Old business approval of the meeting minutes. Do you want to take that or show?
Sure. Meeting minutes approval for March 2025 special meeting, March 2025 regular meeting, and the March 26 2025 special meeting.
If there's no discussion on said minutes, I would ask for a second.
I'll second it.
Here in the second, I would ask for a little call when ready.
Mr. Fleschman?
Yes.
Mr. Levin?
Yes.
And Mr. Mazer's excuse. Okay.
Sir?
I have a little time, so I want to ask Mr. Mazer a question. I guess I'm there.
Okay.
Under old business real quick.
Okay. No worries.
Quick things.
Yes, sir.
Maybe David, I'm not positive. Should've been under old business. I didn't ask for it to be put there. I'm just saying it should be covered there. School downstairs, are you going to be able to give a report?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll wait. I just wanted to make sure and then I heard talk about it when I walked in. Have we done anything on the sound system?
We're working on it as we speak, yes.
Okay, so that was it. That's all I got.
Okay, let's see if I can get this part. A presentation of McGoohan and my bent, bent, or?
Really close.
You were, it took me three months to get it, so you're okay. It's McGoohan Bravender, but I got it down now.
Okay, okay.
It's all good.
If you guys would like to come up, that would be great. Say that three times, you know.
No kidding. You want some this side or this side?
You can stand here or over there. She's going to give a flash on.
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you.
Sorry, gentlemen.
I know.
Technology, you can't live with it or without it.
Chief, can you turn the lights in general for us? Just leave the.
That's good, that's good. We can stay. We won't fall asleep. Storms kept us up all night. No one's sleeping.
I'll make, we'll make sure we keep moving.
Anybody have any family? Who was it? No. What area, town are you from?
I'm in Marysville.
How was it up there?
Not bad. Not as bad as I thought it was going to be. I'm a, I like to stay up and I watch a couple streams and some meteorologists and play along with the app, but.
A year ago, you guys had it real bad up there.
We did, yes. There was a couple that touched down up there and then one at the Indian Lake.
Yeah. Some of that you don't even recognize anymore. Some of this, where they had the motor homes and stuff like that. They're totally, it's just open land.
There's still some of the trees that have been stripped up there too.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you all for having us here today. Really appreciate your time and look forward to having a conversation with you. So just a quick overview for what we envisioned for today's discussion. Won't take more than 15 minutes talking on our side and then feel free to ask any questions as well, but we'll review just a little bit on what we heard from our conversation with Steve and Robin about a month ago. We'll talk about what a renewal timeline typically looks like for a group of your size with your renewal date if you were to work with us and give you a little bit of an overview on us before we talk about next steps.
Is Robin able to hear us? Robin, are you able to hear? Oh, I see you. Okay, good. Good. Go ahead.
Perfect. Thank you.
So we'll just do a quick recap on what we heard from our conversation with Stephen Robin. So current benefits coverage is renewed January 1st every year. The medical's with Medical Mutual. You've got that gap plan with Morgan White Zurich, which is new this year. Your dentals with Delta Dental, Vision with VSP, disability, other benefits are with the standard, who's very good in the public entity space, and then your EAPs with Matrix today. All benefits communication and things of that sort go through Employee Navigator. And really, the big reason we're here is your 1125 renewal. I know it says there 32% initial increase. That is not where you guys ended, not where you ended. You ended, I think, around the 15 to 16% range.
15.
Yep, and Steve and the team were able to get rid of the HRA plan, replace it with the gap plan, which resulted in that savings. So I think overall, a good move to do that from a cost-saving standpoint for the township. I think the big thing is here that the timeline of the changes and the communication and education of the changes felt very rushed to the township, was what we heard.
No, I don't.
Led to employee disruption, not enough lead time to understand available plan options and make informed decisions. So the gap plan was put in place, but without sufficient education on the broker's side, and FormFire was not initiated and completed proactively.
One of the things I would say about FormFire that I was not happy about was when you're filling that out, it was, it was almost like when, I hate to watch a movie that's free and they have commercials. If it was commercial-free, it's supposed to be commercial-free. I'll pay the $3 not to sit through commercials. We had all these other things that we had to answer that made it confusing because when we do the FormFire, I don't want to see anything in there other than what is important to the employees to answer. Then you go off on what you think it's surveys or this, that. Give you an example, I've had Aflac for 12 years. Next thing I know, they've got something in there for this other one, and it gets confusing. Like, am I signing up for this other one? We understand it makes the brokers more money potentially if you have 70 people and you get 70 new people signed up, but we root, I know the board does not appreciate people hocking, selling, or wanting something else. The FormFire, we made mandatory for all of our employees to answer it, and the last thing I want them to do is have to weigh through, like, what is this? Because it was even confusing to me. As a matter of fact, something was turned off on me that I, because I didn't do it right or something because of all the other things. So something wasn't done for me and I can't remember what it was, and then I had to go back. Do you remember what it was, Steve?
No, sure.
Something got canceled.
Okay.
Because I didn't answer it right. So when we do these things and use FormFire, let's use it for what it's for, not trying to advertise more things, is what I'm saying.
Totally understand where you're coming from. And from our perspective, any new benefits that are offered would always be discussed and agreed upon with the township and would be thoughtfully positioned and strategically implemented, not just put in place haphazardly without proper education.
Sure.
For you all and proactive conversation, which I think you'll see when we go through the timeline, that our thought process in working with employers is very proactive, ahead of time, making sure that there's buy-in across all fronts on what we want to do before the 11th hour in mid-December, you know?
So I had the opportunity, we made for the employees is the LifeLock, and myself and I think two other people, we clicked the wrong box because of the upsell, and I took the upper one from the get-go. Well, it ended up being, I've had all kinds of problems. I was on with the broker. I ended up having to start all over again. So I had all my personal information, you know, it takes time to get bank accounts and everything for them to monitor. So it was, it was a little bit crazy.
Frustrating process, it sounds like.
Yes.
Okay. Well, good, thanks for sharing all that, and we'll be sure to talk through some of that in the timeline.
It's simple.
Easy.
I mean, there's not to say that there's a time if you want to advertise and then an email goes out and employees want to go there to look at what options they are. That's great, but when something is mandatory, we don't need to turn that into an opportunity to cash in.
Totally agree. And let me be very clear, our goal as a broker is to position you guys as the township as best as possible.
Sure.
So we would never put a benefit coverage in place without your approval or without proactive conversation, which I think you'll see.
Sure. Well, we appreciate that.
Yeah. Couple other items before we move on to, I think, what is the most important thing, which is timeline, but interested in considering what a couple different medical plan option offerings would look like with Medical Mutual. It's something that we heard. Doesn't mean we need to change the plan that exists today, but we can offer another option that could potentially provide employees who maybe don't want the Cadillac insurance coverage with a lower per paycheck deduction. So that's something we can talk about too. It sounded like there was interest on Stephen Robin's side. And then lastly, Franklin Township, this is what we heard, is looking for a proactive expert benefits consultant partner to serve township employees, drive a market review timeline, and provide strategic consulting to the administrative team. Would you all agree with that statement?
Yeah.
Okay. So with that, if we flip the page here, you know, I think you guys are familiar with the broker role in our model, but as I go to the next slide, there we go. So as the township, you have the power to make a change in broker at any time, and it doesn't impact your insurance lines of coverage at all. You can hire a new broker any day with a letter and fire them the next with a letter. That's your right as the township. So equally, if you decide that your insurance carriers aren't performing in partnership with your broker, you can make insurance carrier changes at any time throughout the year. You're not tied to that January 1st renewal date. It's a unilateral contract between you and the carriers. So that's always just a good thing to note too. If we flip the page, onboarding and renewal timeline. So this is where I think we'll spend most of the time right here for the rest of our conversation, and we'll go through this timeline, kind of line item by line item. Timelines are a mainstay of all of our conversations with employer clients. So we never want there to be a time throughout the year where you all are wondering where things are at or where we're at from a market review perspective or from a meeting perspective. We want that to be very clear upfront at the beginning of the year. So we sit here today on April 3rd, 2025 Franklin Township trustee meeting introduction. Hypothetically, if you all were to say after this conversation today or after additional conversations in the future that, hey, we think McGoohan Bravender is best positioned to help us move forward, and you're confident in our abilities. For 17, for example, we would be able to attend the next trustee meeting and Steve would have the resolution ready for you all to initiate the broker change. We would spend the month of May collecting data from your current insurance carriers so that we have a full picture of all your information. We'd also spend the month of May making sure Employee Navigator is replicated and that you still have that ability for employees to make elections as you hire new people throughout the year. In mid-June, we start our renewal process. We actually have four quarterly meetings with all of our clients. So we're meeting with our employer clients each quarter throughout the year, and in June would be our mid-year strategy. So during that conversation, we would be having discussions around what other like forward-thinking alternative options exist out there from a health plan standpoint that better position the township long-term to contain costs and preserve the benefits of the employees. Things like public entity consortiums, Jefferson Health Plan, Ohio Benefits Cooperative, all things that you all have access to that might stabilize your plans in the long-term and also not require a change away from Medical Mutual. That's, that would be part of our education process in that strategy meeting to help you all understand those options that exist. Yes.
I hate to interrupt him, but I just wanted to.
No, that's fine.
Please, we have this be a discussion.
One, as a board member, I'm one of the older board members currently at 12 years. This is my 12th year. I have seen us go through, and I'm sure the chief has, we've had different insurance companies, one that went down and we kind of got out of it before it completely went under, and we still were stuck paying a hundred and some odd thousand and things. The biggest crucial thing to me, we do not pay, and we have some officers that are getting ready to potentially come on. We may not be the highest-paid department like Safer Police Department, but by far do we have the best insurance that is affordable, and that is the biggest thing to me to all employees, that we can keep this Cadillac plan. I have fought tooth and nail to try to keep that because we have a lot of good people. It does offset the difference between if you went to the city of Columbus for police or if you went to the Sheriff's Department, they have good plans, but you make more money, but then how much more comes out of your pocket to pay for it? And then Steve, in this last year, what we went through to try to keep what we have and went with the Zert plan, it's a little confusing. I used it and explained it to someone, and we had a card copied. If you have any questions, call our broker. I didn't get a bill, so evidently it was taken care of. And that was one of the big things about Meta Mutual. When I pull that card out and I go to my doctor, they recognize that you don't do nothing.
Yep.
Here, fill it. Everything's the same, no difference. Okay, have a seat, wait. So I know for a lot of our people that like to keep their own doctors and not have to change and things of like, of that nature, that would be the most highest thing to me is feasibility, cost. We did not do a mandatory, what do we call that, where everyone had to take the sign up? Where they went through and did an assessment with every person?
FormFire.
FormFire, yes.
That's the FormFire.
So we all did the FormFire, which hadn't been done before, to hope that this is going to bring the cost down. Because in the long run, trying to keep the best, it's a balance. We're spending their money for insurance, and we may have better insurance than some people sitting in the audience, but yet we're able to have a large amount of employees and it offsets each other. So it has to be a balance to make it make sense for sure.
No, that makes sense, and that's really what we specialize in. Like, that's our consult, independent consulting services. We don't have any skin in the game with, we listen to our clients and their needs and their priorities, and then we ensure that we advocate for those needs on, off into the future. So in order to put you in the best position to be able to, you know, because in groups of your size, if you don't do that FormFire process, you're really beholden to whatever Medical Mutual says they're going to increase your rates by. So this timeline, we're very diligent about proactively getting those FormFire processes completed, and we really drive that process with your administration team. So after that mid-year strategy meeting in June, where we talk about options available in the market and what we plan to review, not to move away from what you're doing today, but to be able to have leverage.
With our FormFire that we just did in January, will that still be, would we need to have people go through, do it again?
Great question. So everything that you put in FormFire already remains in there. So if nothing is changed, the only thing that has to happen in September is each person needs to go back in and click through and confirm that nothing has changed.
Gotcha.
So they don't have to start the process over, which is good, but if they've had medical changes throughout the year, they will meet up with those medical changes. So and the unique thing about FormFire is they want those for January 1st renewals, you can start that process 120 days out from your renewal.
Okay.
So as you can tell, that's a very different kind of experience than maybe what you guys experienced this year with when you completed FormFire. If you were with us, we would have had you completing FormFire in the beginning of September so that it was done proactively before we even got the renewal.
So if our employees have questions, rather than have them contacting Robin and Mr. Mazer and et cetera, are you guys available if someone's on the phone going, hey, I'm logged in now?
Yes.
Where do I go? I'm confused. It's been a year, and I'm one of those people.
That would be probably what we specialize in more than anything else.
Okay, because I like to take that out of the hands of, because it slows down the day-to-day operations here, and when you have, how many firefighters do we got now?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six people just there. So when you have all these, you know, we're mandatory that everyone do this so that we all benefit, so it can slow us down.
Yeah, no, we were introduced to you all through parent township, so they would be like, if you want to talk to them about our, their experience, I'm sure they'd be happy to talk as well, but I, that's probably what we specialize in more than anything else. I always say there's, there's a dichotomy of brokers out there in the market. You've got a lot of smaller independent brokerages that are really good at service, but sometimes lack in the strategy department, and then you've got the large national firms, maybe private equity or publicly traded, that maybe have access to strategies but often lack in the service.
Okay.
I would say we're right there in the middle as we're an employee-owned company, but we've got 250 employees across Dayton, Cincinnati, Columbus, Indianapolis, Northern Kentucky, and Cleveland. So we're really headquartered here in the Midwest. We're independently owned and actually employee-owned, so Mike and I are owners of the company. And I think that type of structure and thought process really allows us to perpetuate into the future and make sure that client service is at the forefront of everything we do, but then we also have, because of our size and our bandwidth, access to strategies out there in the market that the average locally-owned independent firm would not have.
Sure.
So kind of the best of both worlds between, what happens a lot in our world is a smaller independent brokerage firm will grow to a point, and then the larger shops will, you know, their phone will be ringing off the hook, them trying to buy that insurance firm. So we're very diligent and fiercely independent. They have no intention of selling, and that's why our founders, instead of selling, transitioned to an ESOP, a locally-owned company. So back to the timeline, we would, we would always start that FormFire process in September. We would want that completed by mid-October because that's when your renewal, we always get the renewals in mid-October from carriers for employers of your size. So also something that might sound different than what you experienced last year as far as when you all received that renewal. Then we would, after we obtain that initial renewal, we'd be happy to attend the next scheduled trustee meeting. So I think 10:16 and 10:30, depending on the receipt of that renewal. If we had it by 10:16, we'll be at the 10:16 trustee meeting. If we don't, we'll be at the 10:30 trustee meeting to present that initial renewal. And then what we, in partnership with the administration team, are doing to, what we see often is that initial renewal is never where it ends. There's always opportunity for negotiation, and that's why we do the FormFire process to go to market and be able to have leverage to negotiate with quotes from other insurance carriers. So we would, we would discuss if you guys wanted us to do that initial renewal in that, in one of those last October trustee meetings, and then in mid-November, carrier proposals would be due. So as soon as we get that renewal, we've got FormFire completed, we have a full census from you all, and we go, we send out that request for proposal to the market. Takes about three or four weeks in the fourth quarter time of year for the carriers to get responses back. So we have that meeting in mid-November to discuss the proposals, and then by the end of November, we'd anticipate that final plan design decisions and contributions are decided upon, and a lot of that's dictated by your union agreements as well, so there might not be much to do there from a contribution standpoint, but plan design, there could be. And then once we have those final proposals and we're ready to have sign-off on final decisions, we would be able to attend, whether it be a special trustee meeting or 11:20, 12:04, 12:11 are the dates that we have on there, because I know Thanksgiving falls always in that time too, so something to consider, but we would, we would attend another meeting and present, you know, our findings from the market, what we've decided upon with the administration team from a recommendation standpoint, what we would do if we were in your shoes. And then we'd have those open enrollment meetings the first week of December for effective date of January 1st, so everybody has, if, God forbid, we have to make some changes, that ID cards are in hand on January 1st. Any questions on that timeline or feeling on good, bad, different than what you're used to?
Well, it's definitely different.
Okay.
I don't have any questions though.
Better, worse, in your mind?
Well, I'm not sure that the way it was laid out to you was exactly the way it happened in the past. So I'm not going to beat a dead horse here, but I'm just going to say there's, if it falls the way you're saying would be great, but in the past, let's say when you get to your step in the first of December where you're actually asking us to make a decision, where that happened this past year, we threw, as far as I'm concerned, the insurance company a curveball and said, no, we don't want that. We want a change. Well, that would throw, obviously, you into a tizzy, and you're going to have to come back with a whole bunch of different information in a quick time, but I understood, with your timeline, I can see where it'll work, you know?
I think, I think the key in our timeline that is different is when we have that initial, when we get that initial renewal, we don't want to surprise you all.
Right.
You know, we want to have proactive conversation. So as soon as we get that renewal, we'll come to the next trustee meeting or we can have a special trustee meeting, and that would be in October. So you guys will have an idea as to where the initial renewal is, pretty much earlier than what you've been used to in the past.
So I agree. So you've got 10:16, 25 down here. If you came out on 10:16, 25, and we say to you, no, we don't want that, we want a totally different thing, that's going to throw a ball into it.
That's, that's actually perfect, yeah, but that's actually perfect timing because we usually get that renewal, let's say, 10:15.
Okay.
And so when we get that renewal on 10:15, we can't even go to market to other insurance carriers until we get the renewal because that's, they all want to see it. It's a weird thing in our world, like, the proposing insurance carriers want to see the renewal in order to even provide a proposal, otherwise they'll just decline to quote, so.
And 100% we need FormFire.
You need FormFire, yeah.
And it's actually going to be the same FormFire. I heard you say that. So the problems that John had with FormFire was not necessarily a broker problem, it was just a problem doing FormFire.
And I think, John, maybe your challenges ended up in the Employee Navigator portal.
It might have been.
I thought it was Employee Navigator.
Yeah, because they had a lot of different things in there, and there was a total of three of us, and all three of us, there was a couple firemen too, all of us had to reset our, because of the different things, we had to reset the Norton anti-lock that we have. But one of the things that I'm looking at here that, Steve, I've never seen done before, and this would have to take pressure off you, it's already set up. We know exactly when we're going to, I've never seen a pre-scheduled like this, and that makes it amazing because usually we're like in a meeting, want, okay, we're going to need to meet with them or et cetera. Robin, am I wrong about that? Have you ever seen it this organized as far as?
Well, I don't think it's ever been presented to us in this sense of a way because I think it's kind of a pathway to our goal, because I'm excited in the mid-October piece, because when you're saying renewal, that's whatever Medical Mutual is going to come back to and say, this is what we look like for 2026. So at that point, the board can say, we want to stay with Medical Mutual, this is what we like the renewal price, or they can say, as trustee Levin said, we don't like that, we need you guys to go to the market and push on, push the timeline. If we agree to Medical Mutual in then October, then our ball's going to roll a little faster.
Yeah.
You know?
100%.
So no, to answer your question, John, I don't think it's been formally set up like this for us on an annual basis. I think that maybe initially, kind of like you guys are doing. I think that maybe initially, kind of like you guys are doing, but I think it would be helpful every year to have that timeline laid out because it truly is our pathway to reaching that goal at the end. And then obviously, we have much happier staff members. Because we were doing the whole benefit summary presentations in the middle of January, after everyone had already signed up. And they're like, oh, well, if I'd have known about that benefit, I might have signed up for it. If I, like John was saying, some of the, in Employee Navigator, the way they were presenting the different layers of options, this was all new to everyone. So I'm not sure that people knew what they were signing up for, or maybe they chose not to sign up because they didn't know. So I think this presentation is super helpful in the timeline, because then we kind of know what to expect next. And if we could do, this is just me speaking, if this should all move forward like an annual, that's a board decision, but an annual presentation of a timeline.
Yeah, we're happy to do that and, and like I said, this will be a mainstay in all of our quarterly meetings. So this will always, the timeline will always be, it's a two-way timeline. So not only are we, you know, holding you all accountable to the timeline, you're holding us accountable to the timeline.
Thanks, Bob.
Now, I hope that you should never have to hold us accountable. If you have to hold us accountable to the timeline, we're not doing our job.
We're driving that process.
Yes, we're driving that process, but it is meant to be a two-way agreement. This is, this is what we're shooting for now. Is there going to be things that could fluctuate? Of course. But this is, this is a very under-promise, over-deliver timeline. Very reasonable in what we're able to execute on with, with employers like you.
So two things that I really liked, that, one, you already know all the meetings and I have to think, oh, is that really the meeting? You've already done your homework, so you've got that, that, better than me, I have to look and see. The second thing is that we have a broker that the employees can call if they have a question. Because a lot of times, we ask Steve or we ask Rob and then they have to find out and get back to us. If, if we make it to the point where there's a number and a contact person or email the person with a question, say a spouse member of someone here has a question, will this be covered, will that be covered or something? That makes it really nice that we utilize the source in which we have brokers, that's why we do it.
So, so two things on page, if you flip to page ten, I just want to tell you on this, that definitely is really important and you bring up a good point, John. Service. So something unique about our structure is Mike and I do not, oh, thank you.
I got you.
Thank you, sir. We do not exit the relationship. So we, if you were to decide that you want to work with us, you know, whether you work for us for three years, ten years, or in infinite years, we never leave the relationship. So we stay involved and engaged in the quarterly meetings.
Sure.
We would bring on an account manager who would be more of the day-to-day assistance for us in helping Steve and Robin with their day-to-day needs. But then uniquely, this is something we created about twelve, fifteen years ago. Because I think what you're experiencing today is you've got a broker who your employees are calling for everything, you guys are calling for everything. They're stretched thin, trying their best to, you know, be all things to all people. And what we realized, because that's what our account managers and us used to feel too, is not only trying to provide strategic consulting to our employer clients, but also trying to help employees with their day-to-day needs. We, we created a specialized team of twelve people now, that all they do on a day-to-day basis, it's called our Midland Breakender Advocate Team. And they're employees of our organization that all they do is they're a resource for your employees. So employees can call that team at any time. They get one of our team members. They're not transferred around like an insurance company would. That person is now their go-to person for all things. They'll have their contact information if they want to, you know, build a relationship and continue to reach out to just that person. And I mean, that's some of the, some of the things that they've been able to do for the employees of our clients, I know that we would have not been able to do if, if we were tasked with both the consulting and, and that type of service. So if we flip, I don't know if it's in here or not, but just an overarching kind of story. There was a member of one of our employer clients that had a brain aneurysm and they were out of state or needed a life flight to another hospital where there was a better specialist for that specific thing they were dealing with. As you can imagine, those type of air ambulance charges sometimes fall out of network. So they ended up with a, this, this was probably a few years ago, so it ended up at forty-five thousand dollars for this member. But they got billed at home. After, I think it was over fifty phone calls, over a hundred emails in ten months, that's how long it took to resolve. Our advocate team was able, able to get that entire charge of forty thousand dollars written off for that member by the hospital. So not only are they talking to the hospital, they're also talking to the insurance companies on behalf of the patient. More now than ever with how insurance companies are, I mean, I think it's very important that, that, that even me, and I'm in this business every day, Mike and I are, if I had a bill that I thought was over char, an overcharge, I would even be lost on where to start. And that's where the advocate team, that's all they do, is every day they know how to navigate the insurance company landscape. They have leadership contacts at the insurance companies because of our size. And same with the hospital systems, so they're able to get things done. And that way, your employees aren't sitting on hold while they're, while they're at work.
Sure.
Spouses don't have to, try to navigate the system and spend hours on the phone, which I know all of us probably have done sometime. It got me very frustrated, getting transferred from person to person, retelling your story.
Or disconnected.
Oh, yes.
Did they hang up or did they get disconnected?
Yeah, so, so that, that, that's why we built this team is so that we could provide first-class service not only to our employer clients, but also to their employees.
Sure.
When they have.
Well, you can't even recommend it from other trustees. Other trustees from other townships and townships administrators have said, this is a good company to go to and that's why you are here today. So with that, to the board and Mr. Mazer, do you have any other questions that we need to ask?
No, sir.
I'm going to do a unique thing. I'm going to open the floor. Does any of the department heads have a question that may pertain? I think it was pretty simple. Okay, I'll close that floor. We thank you guys very much. Thank you for coming up. We appreciate that.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Okay.
That's the plan. That's the plan. Thank you very much.
That's okay, that's okay.
Thank you. Have a good rest of your day, gentlemen. Thank you.
Yes, thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so next up, if we can have Patty Spencer work your way up. You're up next.
Thank you, sir. Oh, happy Thursday, everybody. Happy April Day.
April showers.
We've had them, haven't we? Uh, we've just got a few things. Saturday, April twelfth, Morpsey is having a community housing resource fair. So if anybody, I've got information for it. It's from ten to two, if anybody's interested in going to that. Under our health and safety, Columbus Parks and Rec offers mobile produce markets. They provide a one-week supply of fresh produce to eligible families at no cost to them. The markets are held April through November in different communities throughout the city. And I've got a link to where people can go to find the resources.
Okay.
Under education, Columbus Zoo and Aquarium is starting their Zoo Eight program. And that is comprised of teens who have a natural leadership skill, a comprehensive knowledge of animals, and a high degree of professionalism. And this program is designed for teens entering eight through twelve. The zoo program offers a unique look at different opportunities available to those interested in pursuing a conservation field. And I've got a link to that. And a short story that goes along with that, I have a friend whose daughter went through this program. She then went through the Ohio State Veterinary Program. And she worked for the zoo for quite a number of years and traveled with Jack Hanna to show off at the late-night shows, the animals. So if you ever remember those shows and, and the animals that would come in with Jack Hanna, she was a part of that team.
Wow.
So, yeah, she, she enjoyed her time with all of that. The last thing I have is Tuesday night is our area commission meeting here. And we have a applicant coming before us if you're interested in attending. They are located on Frank Road. And it's a paving company who wants to extend their property. The front of butts Frank Road and the back is Marsdale. So I open the doors around six. Our meeting starts at six-thirty. So if anyone's interested in attending, you're more than welcome.
Okay. At this time, I'm going to open the floor for any questions for Patty. Here are none. I will close the floor. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next is the, we don't have Sheriff's Department here, do we? Okay, so we'll just move on from there. Public comments, you want to? Okay, Brenda? You're up. And I'm just going to wing it because I don't have the, well, I do have the remote.
Oh, I'm not, I'll be long.
I don't want to.
She says she's going.
Okay, go ahead.
Anyway, I just want to say thank you to John and Mike for attending a meeting I had set up with the City of Columbus Storms, Stormwater and Sewers. They came out, Mike, Mike got the line about the Ohio EPA and how they just give blanket, permit. I'm sorry, excuse me. They give blanket permits to these developers to pretty much do what they want and they are self.
Governed.
Self-govern. You know, they inspect themselves and they're just expected to keep a law. And then the inspector comes out and says, oh, the law, good, good to go. But don't give up fighting these developers because if you do, they're going to overtake us. You know, and, and our way of life. We can't let that happen. So that's all I wanted to say. I wanted to say thank you to John and Mike. I really do appreciate it and so did my local neighbors. I mean, these are all my neighbors too, but I do want to thank you.
Well, thanks for having us. Appreciate that. And, you know, I'd like to say thank you to Brenda as a advocate for her neighborhood. She has put countless hours in and not only her neighborhood, but what she's learned from her advocacy, she shared with other areas in the Britton Street, Britton Avenue and Hague Avenue in the corridor there that we seem to be losing a lot of property. And we are at a, a crossroads where come this May sixth, the election for the, or on the May sixth ballot is going to be the fire department levy. And by us changing the levy over to, you know, we're going away with the one that's there and bringing an up-to-date one, where as we lose properties, even though we lose that property, we're not going to lose that tax base. Because every time we lose property, the City of Columbus gets that tax, not us.
Yeah.
And then it's no fault to the police or anyone, budget or et cetera, that we have to make that up somewhere. You can only tighten the belt so tight and, and then you're to your backbone. And that's where we're at with that. So by able, by us being able to do that, makes developers say, ooh, if I annex that, I'm still going to pay their tax. Why not stay in the township? So that's important. New business, I see where we have questions. We've got that one done. Police Department Chief Smith is out. Lieutenant, I think, reporting is yours, sir.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good evening, good afternoon.
Yeah, we do.
Did I give you the different?
Uh, no.
Thank you. I'm going to start off with the normal, my, my police calls, the stats. For the month of March, twenty-three-five, we had nine hundred seventy-one dispatch runs. And here's a short script of some of the runs that we went on. We had eleven assist other units, fifteen burglaries, ninety-four auto crashes, four robberies, thirty-four domestic violences, five alcohol-related runs or, and then five fights or assaults, thirty-seven thefts, six persons with guns or nine, nine shots fired in areas, twelve stolen vehicles, four recovered stolen vehicles, three suicides, four vandalisms, two threats or harassment calls, forty-five alarm drops, eight mental health calls, a hundred and thirty-two suspicious person in car calls, three sex offenses. We had a hundred and twenty-six traffic stops, hundred and five citations issued in or arrested. Ninety-seven reports taken and forty-two people burned down. Talking about the, the citation, I think I remember we had a complaint over, over Rick the Road about a charger. That person's been cited. And then there was a complaint about.
Quad runners.
Quad runners and that, those people, once they've been stopped, they're residents. And we gave them one warning. So we haven't seen them since that morning, okay? I want to just hit on a couple of points that's happened here recently, that the officers have been involved in, that we've been in. You got that, we had the Franklin County DUI Task Force, sobriety check, where there were two felony, we, we participated in it. Two felony drug arrests, one felony gun charge and two misdemeanor warrants in or felony warrants. We also had drug trafficking, distribution of fake social security cards at La Paz Tapatia with one arrest out of it. We had lottery ticket bandit, which was going around the BPs. I think there were like fifty locations that he had hit that we arrested that person. We had a drug bust with a lot, we worked with Franklin County SIU and the Franklin County Sheriff's SWAT team on thirty-six viaducts where we got forty-seven grams of crack cocaine, a hundred and nine grams of cocaine, one stolen firearm and seventeen hundred ninety-nine dollars in cash. We had another drug bust that, we had each, we, these drug busts are, are coming from us either stopping cars or giving, you know, the officers finding out the information to turn it over to SIU. So they help, they involve us in their, their raids, okay? So we had another one that was on nine eighty-four Deer Route where we arrested two people out of it and there was a bulk amount of fentanyl. I don't know exactly how much it was. Last night, we had a homicide suspect out of Ovets where the guy killed his girlfriend over there. And they pinged his phone and it was, the ping came over in the area of Broad and Wilson. So cars got in the area and I guess.
A lot of them.
Yeah, and the county car noticed the car at Forty Motel. The guy barricaded himself in a room and like cut his own throat, not enough to take care of it though. And after a couple hours, the Franklin County Sheriff's SWAT team ended up getting him out. We also had a drive-by shooting where a guy was shot in the hand this week also, not behaved with.
So when the one thousand seven hundred ninety-nine dollars in cash and et cetera, do some agencies get that money back? Since we assisted, that's probably not going to come back to the township?
No, what, the way that works out is there's a task force. The task force gets that money, but we're not a part of it.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so the task force is part of SIU. SIU has like a couple other departments that are in there that are like sworn under the Sheriff's Department as the task force. And we don't have an officer anymore.
Now, one time we did, did we not?
Uh-uh.
Oh, I thought we did.
They offered, they've offered several times, but we just don't have the manpower.
Hopefully, in the near future, that we would be able to be a part of that because it seems if we have a gateway of the drugs coming through.
Yeah, if we, if we did, I mean, we would get a part of the portion of all money from the entire task force, not just from our areas. So whatever they take in, that money is split between the department.
All the departments.
Yeah, and it also kind of gives us, even though we have a very good rapport with the S with our uh, special investigations, I know you know about it.
Oh, absolutely.
You've seen me at our department just make phone calls, hey, for sake of fair, right, you have too. So uh, but when you have a guy in there, you know, you have the correct communication and say, hey, this is what we got going here, come with this, you know, this is what we got going here, come with this, and that brings them all to the area for sure. Uh, our speed trailers are out, one is on Klein Road and one is on Hart Road, we've got those out now so we could kind of get an idea of the stats on the speakers that are out there right now. I've already talked about, you know, Bellme and have you been? You were talking about uh, Finland and the double skirts.
That's fair.
He is, he has been in communications, but he is at this, at this point, and he did not put in here, this chief, I'm talking about chief. Has a phone call in with somebody and he's just waiting on the return of the phone call.
Okay.
Okay? There was something about geese.
The geese, yeah.
And he said that he's made contact with uh, wildlife, Department of Wildlife. And they said that they are protected species and everything is good to them, we're not to touch or mess with them.
Well, we knew they were protected.
Yeah.
I didn't know if there's, you know, even though they're protected, I know there are private companies out there that hire people. Hire handlers that have dogs that chase them and then they don't wanna land, you know?
Yeah, loan them out of there.
Yeah, so I didn't know if the school has had an issue with them as well.
No, I I think it was, wasn't it the school that called about it?
I don't know.
I don't know either, sorry about that. So I I also have, we had Officer West and Officer Hill who've left our department and we've done investigations, backgrounds and one, two. Uh, men that we would like to ask the board to hire to replace those two officers.
Sure.
I'm gonna have them step up here and introduce them to you and to the people in the meeting.
Gentlemen, if you introduce yourself and address the board, if you also give us a little background of where you're coming from and uh, a little bit about yourself.
Sure, my name's Justin Mann, um, I live just outside of Tassaway. If you guys know where Lynn's group farm is over in.
Oh, yeah.
County, right, just north of there. Um, I've got twenty years of law enforcement experience, uh, currently work for the Fairfield County Sheriff's Office. Uh, due to one of your guys' employees, he invited me to come over and said it was a great place to work. Um, to go from a a larger department to a smaller department, um, so that's why I'm here. Uh, during my twenty years, I've been a hostage negotiator on our SWAT team. Uh, I was a narcotics P nine handler and uh, worked with our county's drug task force quite a bit. So I'm excited to make the move over here to help out uh, the citizens and keeping the criminals, I love taking criminals to jail, so.
We we love that. We are a small community, um, fortunately, we also have a great relationship with the sheriff's department. Franklin Township lies within Franklin County and many, many years ago, um, the forefathers that started the county decided, hey, we want to have our own uh, police department, which constables. And they levied a tax to pay for that. As I said, when I first came on, it was a different sheriff. Just because we have our own police department doesn't mean that that keeps you from coming into Franklin Township. So the fact that, you know, Franklin County does work very well with us, it, you know, it is part of it, we do all pay taxes to Franklin County, so. Um, it does make it great that we can have that extra layer of protection.
I'm Michael Steed, I'm coming from Columbus Police and I'm not quite as seasoned as Justin over here, but I just graduated the academy and. Tried to make the switch to come to a smaller department and things I like to do, I like video games, I like hanging out with my friends and I like police work.
Yeah, that's not an easy um, a course to go through that Columbus puts on, so that's, you know.
He had been a cadet also with.
Yes, I was a, I was an explorer and a cadet, so since I was eighteen, I've been interested in law enforcement.
Did you do a little law enforcement through what is called Skills Ohio?
No, I didn't know.
Okay. Okay, does anyone else have any questions?
I was able to meet him the other day, I happened to be over.
So what I would like to do is open the floor if any of the residents would happen to have a question. I think they, go ahead.
Okay, so you said you like to arrest people.
Arrest criminals.
Okay, so there there's fine line between a criminal and a people. Um, you know, because our officers here, they actually calm down a lot of situations. To make it where it's not a criminal offense, you know, they actually have a good rapport with the community. And, you know, I would, I hope that both of you will learn to have that rapport with us and, you know, that's all I ask. You know, and and if any of you are in my neighborhood and you need anything, stop by.
Absolutely.
I wanna know where you live.
Well, I'm sure that they will find out when they get that call from Columbus.
So any others? Here are none, I close the floor. One of the biggest things, the reason I opened that up is to see, I don't think I have to tell you this, I don't know if Columbus tells you this. But some of your biggest backup that you have out there is the residents.
Oh, yeah.
They may not carry a badge or carry a gun, but they have eyes and they have ears and as you know, in twenty years of law enforcement and thirty seven years of law enforcement. Sometimes the trust that comes from the public makes a difference on a lot of the policing that you guys do, so. I thank you guys for coming in at this point, Mr. Mazur, do we, do we have a resolution to go forward today or are we just introducing or what do we do, sir? Okay, sir, carry on.
I'll do it for you.
Carry on.
Okay, I'll start off first with Justin Mann. Being resolved that the board of trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio authorizes the hire of Justin Mann. As a full-time police officer for getting his step fee at a pay rate of thirty seven dollars and forty six per hour as outlined in Article fifteen of the collective bargaining agreement. The start date of the employee is April the twentieth. If all pre-employment requirements are met, which I haven't met that. Uh, being resolved that all formal actions of the board concerning and relating to this resolution were passed in an open meeting of the board. And all deliberations of the board and any other communities uh, that resulted in such formal action were in a meeting open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements. Including section one two one point two two of the Ohio revise code. Being further resolved that this resolution shall be declared emergency and will be in full force and effective immediately upon adoption.
To adoption, yeah. To the board, is there any questions in said resolution? Here are none, I'd ask for a roll call when ready, sir, or I ask for a second.
I'll second.
Here in the second, I would ask for a roll call. Mr. Fleishman? Yes. Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
And Mr. Leesers, excuse me. Congratulations.
Okay, the next one is for Michael Steed. Uh, being resolved that the board of trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio authorizes the hire of Michael Steed as a full-time police officer for getting his step A. At a pay rate of twenty seven dollars and sixty cents per hour as outlined in Article fifteen of the collective bargaining agreement. The start date of the uh, employment is April twentieth, twenty twenty five, if all pre-employment requirements are met. Being resolved that all formal actions of the board concerning and relating to this resolution were passed in an open meeting of the board. And that all deliberations of the board and any of its committees uh, that resulted in such formal action were in an open meeting to the public. In compliance with all legal requirements, including section one two one point two two of the Ohio revise code. Being further resolved that this resolution shall be declared emergency and be in full force and effective immediately upon its adoption. I don't know why I can't get that out. Adoption, yeah.
Hearing said resolution, is there any questions on the uh, resolution? Hearing no questions on the resolution, I'd ask for a second.
I'll second.
With that second, I will ask for a roll call, sir, when you're ready. Uh, Mr. Fleishman? Yes. Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
And Mr. Leesers, excuse me. Gentlemen? Yes.
Absolutely.
It's out there.
Do you guys need this?
We, I think we do, because we have, we have to sign that. You want us to sign that or do you have another one, sir? So they, you did. Rip here when you were talking to me and you said Bellme, but I wanna go back and make sure the people that were here a month ago who said Bellme never sees a cruiser or nothing.
Oh, yeah. Can't leave her, I mean, she'll be chilling.
We've checked in, I got a phone call from Officer Kidwell on a Sunday, would like that gentleman's address and I was able to get it for him and so I know. He either went there or was patrolling and I know you've patrolled Bellme several times, so we've had conversations. So do you wanna talk about that for just a quick second?
I know, I've I've been down there, I actually took a parked car several times over there and said and talked to people walking down the street. There are some traffic out there, they're they're cut through, but it's not that much. I didn't see too many speeders, but there were three tickets written the week of that complaint, for speeding by Officer Kidwell.
Um, the second thing would be, uh, we had a conversation about uh, the Wilson Road Bridge, the homeless camp down underneath of that bridge, can you uh, shed any light on that?
One hundred percent, that's a good one. Uh, I ended up, the guy ended up calling me from the roller company that owns the entire block there, okay? They have signed a trespass agreement with us yesterday, late yesterday. Today I let our boy Roger know about it, cause Roger's very aggressive in that and also distributed it to all the, all the other officers. So we are gonna be tackled on that, but we also had another problem that we also got also. They were moving over in that fifty voluntary old trailer park there.
Yeah.
Where that guy is trying to tear that stuff down and and puts nicer, you know, homes in there. Called me and he's, he said he appreciates the help that we do, but they're cutting this fence, they're coming from that camp, cutting this fence, cross over to get to the the gas station. And stealing pro- uh, property from the guys who are in there working to to do different things, it's costing him a lot of money. So he also sent me a a trespass agreement to be able to sign for the whole deal. Now, my question though is, I don't know if you wanna talk about here or not, as once we get the people out, there's a lot of debris there. And I didn't know if we were gonna try to get that out of there, you know, maybe you have.
Well, the way it worked at AEP, it was AEP responsibility because it was their property and so they paid for a company to come in there and to clean that up. Because you said a real estate company owns that?
Mm-hmm.
So I would assume, we can, I don't think we can go in and clean up.
Well, they offered to give us the property if they do want.
I'm sorry?
They offered to donate the property.
How much property is there? Cut my ears when you said donate.
It's a pretty, it's a wide strip going out through there.
I guess if the board took a look at that and see.
That's a few, though.
See if we, cause I need to take a look at that to see what would we be able to do with it. At this point, when you're playing Monopoly and you can get boardwalk or you can get these other ones, it's not a problem to hang on to that because our borders are being ate up. And if we can do something where it's a block, but then again, we have a humongous cleanup, we always can negotiate that on the cleanup. Per uh, per cleanup, we would take that off their hands because they wanna clean their books of it. But that don't mean that we have to be the ones to clean that up.
Well, I I just wanted to make sure you knew, I wasn't gonna press that today, cause I literally just got it yesterday.
And then Mr. Mazur, do you want him to continue on that or do you wanna talk to the gentleman?
I've forwarded it to you, he can review it if you want.
Okay.
It just says in his letter, he'd be more than happy to, it's a, this place is out of Texas, they're huge. And he says, we buy property everywhere and he said, just for helping out, you guys, one of you guys can have it for the city, he said the city, but you know, you may admit who.
Right, 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 so and then I may wanna get with you, meet you over there and take a look at the property myself, just to get an idea, okay, how would this benefit the township? Does it give us a buffer from annexing anymore? Um, because we don't have to annex it if someone wanted to come. Because one of the biggest things about annexing that we're learning is type two annexation where they. City of Columbus will buy something here or get this annexed and then you have it on different sides. So if you're able to keep a buffer, then it it, just like we are right now, I went to um, with the old Boston Market, I struggled very hard to get that through. Um, and then I was very fortunate, not just me, but everyone that worked on it, that we got all four yeses that they decided to keep it. So if you give a foothold for one little spot that, you know, becomes part of the city, then anything on either side, they can be annexed. So if that piece of property would give us a buffer for there, then we can control what comes into that trailer park if he sells it and then they wanna annex it.
Um, another one, Dave, is twenty four sixty four Chambers Avenue in Briggsdale, you familiar um, of that area?
Yeah, I'm familiar.
Okay, so uh, I went there, Don and I both received something from this gentleman and I went there uh, Tuesday. I spent about an hour and a half over in Briggsdale driving around and talking to different people and things and um. I came back and spoke to Nicole on the other side of the railroad tracks, that's Columbus, because that's where the homeless camp is there.
Yeah, on Key Body back there.
Yeah, so have you been able to?
I actually was just back there uh, a couple of days ago.
Okay.
Uh, one of the guys got sent there on a, you know, the property, the, the, they didn't, a tow company had been evicted out and they left cars and some property back there. So I drove over there, take photographs and things and.
I had photographs.
Yeah, and I sent them to Nicole to see what we could do. The property on this side belongs to the road up until you get to our, our uh, easement. So I went over to talk to Jim, Jim gave me a sheet that shows all of our ees- easements, which was like just yesterday. So I was starting to kind of attempt to get rid of those cars, but on the other side of the road track, they write that is on.
That's Columbus, okay.
Well, I was gonna report that back to you.
Okay, sure.
That's Columbus, so I'm not sure what uh, we can really do about that.
And that's where we run into these issues that I hate, you know?
Well, with our time constraints, I'm gonna stop there for the day, so that's all I've got for the day for today.
Okay. Um, if you just wanna glance, that gives you an idea where that's at. Okay, so at this time I'm gonna open the floor to the to public if they have a question for Lieutenant.
Anybody wanna?
Anybody else?
Okay, so uh, we have people driving down our road, Brooks Island, and dropping people off down at the end where the guardrail is.
Are they going over, are they like going back in the woods?
Yeah, they're going back in the woods right there, I'm not sure, I mean, when they're getting out of these cars, they look like homeless people.
Five and six, some people over there.
I don't know, but I can take care of that problem for you.
I have noticed the speed on that road too, you know, if we have, I know we have a lot of the cars because of the the conditions that we have in this area and stuff, it's hard to get up north. But um, when I was at your meeting, I noticed some of those cars coming down there forty, forty-five mile an hour on a twenty-five mile an hour down that hill and I'm like, good lord.
Well, what they're trying to do is because they're trying to find a cut through, is what they're trying to do, they don't realize.
Oh, yeah.
Even though they see that no outlet sign, they just fly on by and, you know, one time somebody was.
Sure.
Yeah, I'll send you a guy, I'll send you.
Yeah, if we get some attention this summer and in spring and stuff like that, I mean, cause there's a lot of the areas like that, sometimes we don't get many people, like up on on Dara, we may not have. Any complaints, but it's not that idea to sit in there occasionally and, yep, exactly, cause it's GPS, a busy day, people are like.
Well, that's a good for traffic too.
Yeah.
So if they even cut through, they can be driving a speed limit, they get charged to ten people a time.
Oh, yeah, I remember an officer named um, Francis that I had approved that Joe Rice was a friend of mine and I'm going to see him.
Didn't even help.
Oh, he was gonna put me in jail because of that, you know him?
Yeah.
But I, I got stopped going through there and I, and they checked your license and what are you doing in here and I'm like, well, what's his address? It's right around the corner, I don't know the address. So with that, sir, anything else for us? All right, okay, we got a question?
Do you have anything to do with Stone Ridge Village?
Sorry.
Huh?
Sorry.
So any other questions before I close the floor? Here are none, I close the floor, sir, thank you so much.
Let me excuse, I gotta take them over.
Yes, yes you do, and gentlemen, thank you so much for. Yes, yes you do, and gentlemen, thank you so much for coming. Mr. Stevens. Our way, excuse me.
Oh, no, 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 you already called my name, no, go ahead.
I'm actually way off, we have to please resolution, other way, yes.
I don't get a hug?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, boys.
Just some run stats for the month of March. Fire department took eight hundred and thirty-six runs, one hundred and twenty-five of those were in the township. That included twenty-four fires, four of which were buildings, seven cardiac arrests, four of which we got returned, spontaneous circulation, took them to the hospital. Medic one ninety-two is out of service for three days due to staffing levels. Medic one ninety-three was also out of service three days due to staffing levels. Six days total, we didn't have both ambulances running due to our staffing levels, due to our financial situation and the levies we had. More on that, April seventh, next Monday, right down here at Central Baptist Church, we're going to do a town hall meeting, an informational meeting for that levy, please come if you have any questions, if you just want to show support, if you need signs for your yards, anything, if you want to know what your taxes will change. The auditor's website updates on Monday, so we'll actually include the levy if you find the right button to push on their website to, we can walk you through how to figure out how much it will affect your tax, annual tax. So that's at seven o'clock right down here on Monday, please join.
I did get that wording changed for you, that the auditor could have.
Oh, good.
Where it explicitly says cancel existing limits.
Excellent.
I did get that, I did get that changed for you.
That's important. Yes, we're going to go over how to see that. I got a little PowerPoint that just shows the need and the different, different things.
Is the hotline being improved for that you set up?
Just one call, but I'm kind of glad it's not, as no one's calling it yet because I don't have, I don't want to give out misinformation and when the auditor updates their site with actual information, then we can give factual information to that hotline. So the one call I got, I said, "This is my best guess, but I'm going to call you back on the seventh and tell you the actual."
Okay.
How much your taxes will change.
Then, real quick, take.
No, I was just going to ask if there was any other questions.
Take three minutes, I'm going to run through my personal encounter with your fire department the other day if you don't care.
Oh, yeah.
So a week ago, Monday, I was in need of the fire department and I got called and the truck came out because I was unable to get to my own vehicle, I was going to try to, I needed to go to the hospital and I wasn't able to do it on my own. And the truck came out and that was, the firemen came and were going to get me to my vehicle, at that point in time, I realized I couldn't get myself to the hospital, so Columbus was called, so I had the truck in front of my house, then I had a Columbus ambulance came and then at that point in time, they determined that they weren't able to help me because of my size, they said it would be eight minutes and there would be another ambulance there and so Columbus sent another ambulance. I was very well taken care of, the Franklin Township Police Department, or Fire Department and the Columbus Fire Department worked very well together and I much appreciated it and I was taken to the hospital and taken care of and my taxes personally are going to go up like three hundred dollars for the year. At that point in time, I would have gladly written a check right then and there for three hundred dollars and then felt like I had gotten a deal. Columbus worked well with us and anybody that's been watching the news this week has seen what Columbus is saying about their equipment and things that are going on. So if we lose our, one of our fire stations, there's going to be two more apparatuses that's coming off of this side of town. And so I just wanted to get that word out there, very much appreciated. All of your men and the Columbus people were very nice to me and took very good care of me and I don't know that the Columbus people knew who I was or anything else, I'm just saying, was very well taken care of, much appreciated and I wanted to share that, so.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks.
One thing that we got to keep in mind, if you watch the news, we've had several fires in the township and we were there within a short period of time and I just saw one posted the other day that you guys were there fairly quick. I can't help but think of the syndrome of California, they had all the great people, the great, the best of equipment, the best of everything, unfortunately, their funding, they had no water. And without the water, the best equipment, the best people, there's nothing that you can do. So that just goes to show us the value that we need in our police department. It's never an emergency on your part until it is on your part, meaning part of you. A lot of times, a lot of us don't think about it and my father's ninety-two and he's been staying with me and twice I've had to call and they were graceful enough to come and help getting to the hospital and I don't think I've ever had to call ever in thirty years, but those two times that it was very close to dire strait, it was great that I could make that call and they were there, so I greatly appreciate that. So at this time, I'm going to open up the floor for any questions for the chief. Here are no questions at this time, I will close the floor, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so from here, we're going to move on to the fiscal department.
I like that.
So Mr. Stevens, when you get a chance, if we can talk about this here that you slid up to me, this is the, that link into red, yes, right, is that what, okay.
I really didn't have anything on the agenda for today, gentlemen, and unfortunately, I just got out of a three-hour meeting, so I don't have all my stats put together, I will have that for you in the next meeting. The only update I would have on the building would be, is we found out this week through our asbestos inspection that they did before Low and Dick were going to start demolishing the building, they have to take the caulking off from around the doors and so anything that had any kind of asbestos, asbestos in there, it's caulking, the roof was fine, they're just caulking around the windows, but windows are left and they got to do that.
Asbestos and caulking, is that old caulking or is it?
Honestly, like nineteen thirty.
Not to that.
Yeah, it's just a few years ago.
Low and Dick is doing that.
Yes, they, well, I copied you on the email that they had sent me, Mr. Mazur, and they, they're going to go ahead and coordinate that with somebody that they work with.
Okay.
And once they get that done, I've already, here's the property, I've actually done it twice, trying to figure out, right now, what we're trying to figure out is the supply lines from the gas and the water from this building to that building, so we can go ahead and get them. When it's time, we can sever it and go from there, but other than that.
So, sir, looking at this, have you had a chance to see?
I've seen the actual.
Okay. So with the township, if we was to obtain this piece of property, I mean, I know it's skinny and it's long, it looks as if we would have to cut that. There's no trees, no nothing, it's just a straight piece. That should not be a problem for us to do, is that correct? Or does the oil fields cut that currently or?
To be honest with you, I don't have any idea who's actually cutting it, I don't know what purpose it would do us to have that little piece of property because it's not really.
More chips in the game. It's foodie. I mean, if I can use that as, I don't know if you guys can see.
No.
Can you let the auditor? Having a wedge long piece like this can, as we're seeing in different places in the township, if you had a buffer, I know there's a lot of places wish they had that buffer that would keep them.
Where is it?
This side of this partial right here is where all the tins are.
Okay.
So that one there.
It's in the red, correct?
So they're going to be right underneath the railroad track basically?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, the little red box.
I haven't stopped there to see what it would take for us to clean it up, but there's one thing that is certain, God don't make land in.
Oh, no, no, you said that a lot.
So if, if, I mean, if it's a little bit of pain stake that we have to do to maintain it and it protects our borders a little bit more.
We got easy access, maybe to answer your question, we got easy access to get down in there with our mowers, that's.
Okay, okay. Anything else for us, sir?
I got something.
Go ahead, Jim.
No, I, I think I would dodge the bullet with this one last night.
I called you this morning, but you're in a meeting, that's why I'm going to ask, my phone worked last night, I didn't hear anything, I wasn't woken up.
So you told me, I checked with you the other day, you were moving to alleys up north?
Yes.
Broadmont area?
Yes.
Okay, so here's what I want to discuss with the board, Steve. That Speedway on Broad Street, that lot behind them and then that alley is a disaster and we have talked about this, talked about this forever. And it dawned on me that down here on one oh four, the people that came in here and asked for our, to grant them permission or go along with them to build the new Speedway down there. Now Speedway's Speedway and if they can't take care of that one up there, then I feel like, how much do we want to, and I understand that they're already in progress of building that, but they're not being very good neighbors.
Okay.
That lot out there, I asked you to please drive by and look at it, they own that lot back there that looks like it's abandoned and there's trash there and then the trash that goes up that alley is horrendous. And with Speedway wanting to put in a brand new Speedway down here at one oh four and Frank, we have to have the ear of somebody at Speedway.
Sure.
That in, in the upper part of the company can go out here and look at this mess out here and we can get something done, so.
I know, we, we have, road department has cleaned that lot up so many times and it's just like we get absolutely no help from Speedway and you're absolutely right, the alley that goes, that's like their, that's their hallway, that's the one that they travel in. We've actually got video, Tommy would have it too, he was here, we have video of us were cleaning the alley and as we're cleaning the alley from Speedway heading south, Tommy's sitting in the truck, there's a guy coming right behind us and just throwing his trash out, said he had gotten his coffee cups and whatever, his bag and stuff that he has.
Hundred percent.
That's bad.
I mean, they're bad over there.
It's terrible, but you know, do we expend a hard time to clean that up, it's not on us.
We had, we cleaned it up one time, I do remember. And a month later, the county had a program and came through and filled up two dump truck loads, I'm like, how in the world in too much time can you have two dump truck loads of just trash? The amount of effort that it takes to stack that much up is just unreal.
So is the resident, is the alley, the grass side that goes into that, it is ours to clean?
Up to the fence.
No, yeah, the parking lot area, the paved area, all of that right there.
I thought you meant the alley itself.
The paved area is.
No, that, that's not us, but I'm talking about the part behind these people's homes.
The alley.
The alley where some of that stuff blows up into, which we, we make regular trips up in there to get things cleaned up, we have not been in there yet, we're waiting to get up in there with the boomers, so we will be cleaning it up then. But then you give it a couple of days and we're right back to where we were at.
Agreed, but I mean, if the alley's ours and the alley has to be cleaned, then we have to bite the bullet and clean the alley.
It really looks like a dirt pathway. Yeah, all of that is there, would be on us, because our responsibility is to the fence.
So, that's all I have, thanks, Jim. Not, I'm just saying, I know you would address it because you already told me you were going to move in on the alleys over there and stuff, I'm not, I'm not complaining to you about this, I wish there was a way we could do something about this.
So.
Here, here's exactly for the Speedway, I, I, this is the parking lot at Speedway, I took all these, I was out three hours the Sunday before that and then here is that, look at this, look at this.
Oh, my goodness.
It's bad.
And then after the wind we had, I can imagine how much is there.
I mean, with weeks, these guys.
I have a question, Mr. Stevens, I see trash cans sitting back there and when the stuff blows out of the trash cans, they just leave it. Are we able to craft a letter to every one of those residents that back up to that to say, "Your response there, they need to pick up trash when it comes out of their trash can instead of us?" Because why are they going to pick it up, it's behind their house, Franklin Township will eventually get it.
That would be it.
Why pick your clothes up off the floor, mom will get it.
That would be a decision y'all would have to make and then I guess some of the residents would actually probably say, "What, how do you know that's mine?"
Well.
Of course it's a bad address.
Everybody's going to say that, everybody's going to say, "How can you bring it in?" And that's, it's an envelope with your name on it, then it's.
Yeah.
But we fought that already.
So the other thing that I would ask you to do is to see if you can get a contact name with Speedway and let's get with Chief Smith, because one time we. Yeah, we sat down with them before with the homeless to be able to get that agreement signed. Let's see if we can get them to come in and have a talk. I'll be more than happy to come down here, I'm sure trustee Blevins would be happy and show these pictures and say, "Listen, this is not attainable, you have to keep your property clean."
The only other thing I got is if any of you were all out the other night during a windstorm, we had five roads closed down with trees over and I appreciate your patience if you were trying to get by.
So at this time, I'm going to open the floor if there's no more questions from the board, any questions for the board, any? Sam, not all, Brenda, just a second.
Okay, so anyway, along with that problem, do they do the trash pickup in that alley?
Trash trucks do come down this alley.
Okay. Like on Brookside, we have problems with local waste, they just.
Toss it.
They just toss it and it goes everywhere. I can't tell you how many bags of trash I've picked out of my yard, you know, but.
Tell me about it.
I have another question real quick, my residents, the residents on my road and I were wanting to know if we could put a fence at the end of our road and the end of Plainview and Dover also.
You're talking about where, where the guardrails are at?
Yes.
If they pay for it, they were, they're looking at a community to put a fence down through there because there are a lot of some traffic where they're going and where they're coming from.
At the end of Dover, they go through there, at the end of that road, if you're walking over to the park, the park that's over there, like on your road on Brookside.
Right, but they also come from those low income apartments over there and cut through and they're, they've been stealing stuff out of people's driveways and stuff like that, that's why my neighbors are really starting to get concerned.
I think that would kind of fall down into a decision that the board of trustees would have to make because you would have to put that fence up in our right of way to make it work.
So here's what I would like to entertain, if we can find out from, from the county, are we allowed to put a fence up? If they are, Franklin County Engineers Office is okay with that, then if their association or their neighborhood comes to us and says, "We would like to pay for a fence to go down through their chain link fence or whatever," then I guess it would come back to the board for a discussion. So if we at least know the county wouldn't have an issue with that, other than if they would open it up and get that, but it, it would behoove of us to find that information out first before you guys start putting funding together for it.
And it would have to be some sort of an agreement drafted up between them and the board.
It would be a donation, they're going to pay for it, they would have to donate the fence and et cetera, that way.
And the maintenance of it, let's say that they come down through there and cut big holes in it like they do.
Right, 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 right.
So I'll check with the county and see what they have to say, if they think it's a good idea, yes, no.
Okay, I see. Any other questions, yes?
This is more for Mike, are, are you concerned with the one oh four Speedway down there?
I would just like a meeting with the people at one oh four, so I can address it with them that we're not going to be a dancing partner with them on this thing if they can't take care of the ones that we have in our township already.
The applicant came before us, it's on county land, that particular spot, but I do have names, this was like three years ago, I can go through my records and see who all the contact names are, let you have them and let you start making fun of them.
Sure, that works.
Thank you so much.
That's great. Nice to take and open the floor, you never know what you're going to get. So at this point, if there's any further questions?
Not a question, Jim, you and your crew just be extra careful on these really bad nights.
Oh, yeah, it's fun.
You're right.
With that, I close the floor, thank you, sir.
If there is any more questions, can I be excused again for the guys?
Not a problem.
Thank you.
Okay, this will be pardon.
Jim. Jim.
Yeah.
This will be pardon?
I didn't know we had.
We get last week. We get last week.
Can't go wrong.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sir, I'm gonna turn that, this portion over to you. Never mind. I have a motion to approve accounts payable. Be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board makes a motion to approve accounts payable from March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five through April third, twenty twenty-five in the amount of seven one thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars and eighty cents from electronic payment voucher number zero eight zero four dash twenty twenty-five through zero nine four one dash twenty twenty-five. And warrant seven zero seven five five through warrant zero, or seven zero seven six four. And I have the attached exhibits.
Okay. Any questions on said, uh, resolution? Hearing none. I'd ask for a second.
I'll second it.
I have a second. Now, roll call please when you're ready.
Uh, Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
And Mr. Lees is excused. Uh, the next I have is a motion to approve payroll. Be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board makes a motion to approve the employee payroll for the period March ninth, twenty twenty-five through March twenty-two, twenty twenty-five in the amount of one hundred and eighty-four thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars and ninety-eight cents. Direct deposit made on March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. Electronic vouchers zero eight five eight, twenty twenty-five through zero nine three seven dash twenty twenty-five.
Is that motion a resolution?
Uh, it's a motion.
Okay. Hearing the motion, I'd ask for a second. There's no further questions.
I'll second it.
With that second, I'd ask for a little call when you're ready.
Uh, Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
And Mr. Lees is excused. Then I have a motion to approve the Board of Trustees' payroll as written. Be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board makes a motion to approve the trustees' payroll for the pay period March one, twenty twenty-five through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five in the amount of sixty-four hundred dollars, I'm sorry, six thousand, four hundred dollars and fifty cents. Direct deposit via ACH on April one, twenty twenty-five. Electronic voucher zero nine four two dash twenty twenty-five through zero nine four four dash twenty twenty-five, and the exhibit is attached.
If there's no further question on said motion, I'd ask for a second.
I'll second it.
Hearing the second, I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Uh, Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
And Mr. Lees is excused. And that's all I have for you from the fiscal side.
Okay. Thank you for doing that, sir. Thank you for your service.
Sure, sure. As long as it's easy like that. The next resolution I ha- our resolution I have for you next is twenty twenty-five dash zero four six. Uh, it's a resolution approving obligations authorized by the township administrator. And the Board of Township Trustees, a resolution twenty twenty-one dash one thirty authorized the township administrator to improve obligations of ten thousand or less on behalf of the township in accordance with section five oh seven, point one one of the ORC. Pursued to the provisions of section five oh seven, point one one A, the ORC, the obligations approved by the administrator must subsequently be approved by the adoption of a formal, formal resolution of the Board of Trustees. So therefore, be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the obligations authorized by the township administrator as presented in exhibit A and attached are hereby approved and in all formal actions of this board concerning and relating to the adoption of this resolution were passed in an open meeting of this board. And in all deliberations of this board and in its committees of resolving such formal actions were in open meetings to the public in compliance with all legal requirements including section one two one, point two two of the ORC, uh, this resolution shall be declared emergency and be in full force effective immediately upon its adoption.
Hearing said resolution, if there's no further questions, I'd ask for a second.
I'll second it.
I've got the second, and we'll call when ready.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
And Mr. Lees is excused. Now I have resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero four nine. It's a resolution provides supplemental appropriation number three for the period of January one, twenty twenty-five through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Whereas it is necessary to provide for the current expenses and other expenditures of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio during the year ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. The annual appropriations resolutions twenty twenty-four dash one forty for the period from January one, twenty twenty-five through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five needs and mandates. Therefore, be resolved by the Board of Township Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the sums presented in exhibit A here to attach B and the same are hereby set aside and appropriated for several purposes for which expenditures have been made for and during the year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. All formal actions in this board concerning related to the adoption of this resolution were passed in an open meeting of this board. All deliberations of the board and in its committees of resolving such formal action were in meetings open to the public in compliance with section one two one, point two two of the ORC, this resolution shall be declared emergency and be in full force and effective immediately upon its adoption.
Hearing said resolution, twenty twenty-five dash zero four nine, if there's no further questions, I'd ask for a second.
I'll second it.
Hearing the second, I would ask for a roll call.
Uh, Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
And Mr. Lees is excused. Uh, next resolution. It's a resolution authorizing the transfer of funds. Whereas transfers from the general fund are necessary to provide resources for specific improvements and therefore be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, the trustees authorize the following transfers follows. From the general fund to the fire levy and permanent improvement fund of a hundred thousand dollars. And from, oh, I'm sorry, from the general fund to the fire levy fund for a hundred thousand dollars. And from the general fund to the permanent improvement fund of a hundred thousand dollars. That all formal actions in this board concerning and related to the adoption of this resolution were passed in an open meeting of this board. And in all deliberations of this board and in its committees of resolving such formal actions were in meetings open to the public in compliance with section one two one, point two two of the ORC, this resolution shall be declared emergency and be in full force and effective immediately upon its adoption.
Hearing said resolution, if there's any further questions on the matter, I'd ask for a second.
I'll second it.
Hearing the second, I'd ask for a roll call when ready, sir.
Uh, Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero five one. It's a resolution authorizing payment to vendors via warrant by the temporary deputy fiscal officer. Be resolved at the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio. March sixth, approve the appointment of James Stevens to serve as temporary Franklin Township Deputy Fiscal Officer to fulfill the duties of the fiscal officer in their absence. According to resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero three eight, the Board of Trustees grants the deputy fiscal officer the authorities to approve and sign warrants for payments to vendors for services or products rendered to the township. And all formal actions in this board concern, concerning related to the adoption of this resolution were passed in an open meeting of this board. And all deliberations of this board and in its committees of resolving such formal actions were in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements including section one two one, point two two of the ORC. This resolution shall be declared emergency, be in full force and effective immediately upon its adoption unless otherwise specified.
Hearing resolution, I would ask for a second if there's no further questions.
I'll second it.
With the second, I'd ask for a roll call when ready.
Uh, Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
And Mr. Lees is excused. And then the last thing I have, and Chief Smith looked into this for me. It's a liquor license transfer from uh, the existing Johnny's Tavern owner to the new Johnny, Johnny's Tavern owner. Uh, of course, it's located there on Traveview. And like I said, the chief looked into it, didn't see any problems with it, and thought it was fine for the approval of the transfer of the liquor license.
That's pretty much the only spot left in the township now. All of that is now gone. So, do we need to vote on that?
Uh, just, it just need a motion to approve it, and then John, it looks like he either enjoyed, they, they approved this form. Either they enjoyed signature or my signature. Just ask for a question.
Sure, okay, so hearing said, uh, motion in regards to Johnny's Tavern with the transfer of liquor license, um, any questions on the matter? Hearing none, I would ask for a second.
I'll second it.
With that second, a roll call, sir, when you're ready. Now they just remodeled too, didn't they?
They're going in right now, yeah.
It's gonna be a hopping place. Owner got that at a good time. I don't think the old owner ever spotted him go that far.
They, they must have made it with the offer. Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
I'm too excited, 'cause we're at the end of the, uh.
I, I really do have an urgent question.
Okay, okay, let me, let me get this part, and then I'll open the floor on that. Okay. So at this time, I'm gonna open the floor in regards to the liquor license for Johnny Tavern that is on Hague Avenue, uh, or Traveview, hedge corner, down from Hague Avenue to the east on Traveview Road.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, last night at the meeting, I'm not sure if it was said during the meeting or after the meeting by the new owner. I believe that's being annexed into the city of Columbus.
Let me just scratch. You got a razor high top.
No, I, I'm being serious.
Johnny's Tavern is gonna be annexed.
How can you transfer a liquor license to the city of Columbus? I mean, if that in fact is the case.
Need a chance to check in and see if they have any intention.
Of course you have announced in Franklin Township.
Why know we're still gonna do this?
Liquor licenses are bought and sold and transferred.
Right. I'm just curious why they, what benefit would they have to do that?
Because they own the rest of it. They own that new development going in there next door.
They would be the only little spot. I would hope that they would hold off. I don't know if Johnny's Tavern owns the ground that they're on, or if they lease that.
Yes, they do.
So, maybe a phone call to them to just to ask them, hey, are you gonna stay with the township? Just to, you know, or are you gonna, you know, I don't know.
Get on it, yeah.
I, I, I can do that.
Okay. So at this point, Mr. Leeser is gone, and probably one of the reasons at the end of this meeting, I'm thinking about sharing something with you guys and how I'm going to do it.
Are we done with Mr. Mazur? 'Cause I think there's one more thing.
Oh, are we done, sir? You said that's it?
I got all the, all the resolutions?
Oh, you know what? I misread this. Okay, so this is what Jim did. So I do have two questions to Mr. Mazur. I can wait till.
No, no, go ahead. Go ahead.
Trustees come.
Pulling this up.
Was, are you ready to give us an update on the young lady, uh, as far as, are you not ready?
I am.
No, 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 no. This is a great question. I would like to bring her in at the May first meeting, take her into the exec, and let her introduce herself to the trustees, and let the trustees, uh, ask any questions to her, anything to do with qualifications, absolutely. So I was looking at May one.
Okay, I, I, I thought you and I had a conversation about, so I thought you were going to discuss it today.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I'm glad you reminded me.
And then lastly, can we get a quick update on, uh, what's going on in the office? Do you have any word on that?
I do. Hopefully, they will start working on that. The first of, end of April, first of May. I'm hoping it's finished before Robin comes back. So I've got my fingers crossed on that. But yes, they're on the schedule.
Can I make a, can I make a comment about that? I'd like the board to think about.
Okay.
And you? So when they do that work in there, they're gonna have to clean that office out completely, correct? So, if you want privacy in this building, and we have a huge problem with privacy, we have to create the privacy. So when that stuff comes out of that room, I would like everybody to consider that this office becomes Robin's office. And that puts the clerical altogether on one side. At, for the time of the work being done in the back office, you can take up office in the this, uh, room right here. And when that gets done, you take over that office, and then that gives a barrier in between. But if we want privacy and we don't want everybody carrying the conversations all around and everything, we, it's on us to create the privacy. And so I just want everybody to just think about it.
I appreciate that.
I'm not trying to get.
Does that mean I get to pick the pay calls?
I, I, you can do whatever you want. They gave you day-to-day operations, didn't they? But I just, I just think about it and everything, and it would just make sense to me if we just create a little zone down through the middle here.
And, and one of the things once before, and I'm fine with that whatever, you know, makes you comfortable in work, is, uh, at one time I wanted them to put a, either a sliding door in or a French door so you can go from the conference room to your office. So basically, this back wall would have.
All you made between these two offices here.
So, I mean, they're gonna be working anyways. But, I mean, if that was to be your office, you could easily, you know, you'd never need to come out here to go there to the conference room. It'd just be a door that you could go between the two, and I mean, that can't be very expensive to put a door in.
You realize, and I understand, that the payroll specialist is very busy. But when we have to have someone cover that front door because Nicole would not be here for any reason, or she has a duty to go something else. Mr. Mazur is the one that's taking care of the window. If, if we have the payroll specialist in this bill, in this office, she can come around and take care of that window.
Yep.
And help out.
I agree. I agree.
It just makes sense to me as I thought about it, and I wanted to present today. I'm not asking for anybody to move on it, let James hear about it and everything, but it's the perfect time when you're gonna have that office cleaned out anyway, and you're gonna have to move those big filing cabinets out of there. Why move them multiple times when you can just move them in this office, one yard?
That was very smart thinking, sort of order of thinking. So, um, I'm glad that we said all of that. Do you have anything else before?
No.
Okay. So I wanted to share with the public, on Tuesday, um, approximately eleven-ten, I got a text message, and it was a group text message, and it came from Lindsay. And she's wanting to know where her pay is. So, I didn't say anything for a while. I was seeking good guidance, but I, I it went on. Why, like, I, some of this is hard to read. Why would Ome do that? Okay, that's how it was written. What I said to Lindsay is, she's wanting to know, now that she's back to work.
Really?
Why her pay is being held up. She does have a computer. My best understanding, she has not yet even logged into UAN. In her text messages, also, I will, I will only be attending quarterly meetings from here on out. Well, she was here at the last meeting, and I apologize to the public. I should've opened the floor for questions, and I didn't. So I apologize. That was my mistake. The other issue that she has, she says, I made the quarterly meeting, I'm back to work. Any reason I have been, I haven't been paid for March? Backing up before that. I have no contact information for Kirby, Curb, how you say his name, Kirby?
Chris Kirby.
Yeah, Chris Kirby. This is why, after not being let in, I wanted, I, I waited an hour. It's very clear that people here don't want to let me in, even after this was scheduled for today. for today. Going back to the cameras, I believe it was.
Six minutes.
Six minutes she waited. So there wasn't, there's sixty, sixty minutes in an hour, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't know if it was the new math or not.
Yeah.
Um, so I just wanted to share this with them, but I, one of the things that the auditor, you know, came back, we all seen what the auditor had to say and suggested that we work together. My interpretation of work is one that works. Um, I invite her here, we can have the conversation about your pay and the resolution that we would need to do to reverse it. She doesn't wanna come in until.
They can do it.
Three months from now. But there's no work on her part being done. If you had to ask her where we are on any of this that Mr. Mazer has read off, she didn't craft it, she didn't know it. If Mr. Mazer, sometimes I make fun, Mike, one like this, but the seriousness of the situation, if Mr. Mazer would not do what he does and the stuff that he had to read off for us to pass, it wouldn't getting done. Mr. Blevins, I wholeheartedly agree with them. He voted no in a meeting not too long ago. And I know people are like, well, how do you and Mr., um, not, did I say Mazer? I didn't mean to say Blevins, um, get along? Well, because I know where his heart is for the township. I wanted to vote no to not bring in any other people, but I knew if I did, it would pass. Then we would be in trouble because we don't have enough any, I shouldn't say, that's an old saying, we don't have enough oars in the water to keep the boat moving. It's imperative that we have the right people in place, that we can continue this township moving forward, paying our people, paying our bills, making sure the township is a township. Just because one person doesn't wanna come to work and work, if they had to do the, give me five things you did this week, um, one of them was send me a text. Okay, there you go. So there was one thing. What's the other four things that you did that week? So either someone's gonna work with us, we've done, we've jumped through all the hoops of saying, okay, recraft the language that you have about me being in the building. We did that. There's always an issue of, well, I can't do this because of this, I can't do this because of that. Now she can't log into her email. My advice to you, because I know she's watching, do the same thing you did when you had your computer scrubbed so no one could see what was on there. You called the revelation group that we currently contract with and you work with them. It's not our responsibility as trustees to say, okay, I called, here's your new password, go ahead and log on. Okay, I'll be right over to turn the power button on for you. You have to take initiative. If you're, you ask for this job, you campaigned for this job. The people here sitting in this room and our residents, the reason I do what I do, the reason you're not getting paid is because my bosses, which are the public, are fed up with this nonsense. The only other thing that we can do from here, we did go and we, you know, by help of the public, we did an affidavit. Well, that went so far. The thing that we can do is the public can do a recall. And basically people could sign and say, we wanna recall this person. It puts the decision in your hands and not the state auditor.
Correct.
So I just wanted to put that out there because realistically, what are we gonna do for the next three months that we don't have someone? We are looking at in May first, trying to get someone, get hit in the ground running that we can do that? I am just thankful this man hasn't quit. I don't know, there must be no quit in you, I don't know, unless it's better here than at home. Because the honeydew list. I don't know which list is worse. But I do think that Robin has put countless hours in and she's getting ready to do a vacation that is long overdue. Um, and how, I can't imagine Robin going on vacation thinking, okay, how long is my laundry list when I come back? I, oh God, I wish I wouldn't even went on vacation because I'm gonna have three weeks to catch up. This should not be like this. This seat is empty today and there's no sense for that. We've changed the resolution to come here, you've got your computer back, you've got your phone, we've given you all the tools. You have to pull them out of your own toolbox and you have to use them yourself. Either you wanna do the job or you don't. If you have a care for this township and you really care for these people, resign. Because what you're doing is not helping the township. It's averting. We have to spend more tax paid dollars because you're not sitting here today. Please consider before these people actually have to go through the steps of having a new election in order to have that seat vacated. Think about that. Sir, do you have anything? And I apologize that I went on a tangent there, but it needs to be said.
I do. Um, it's not gonna be popular, but I've received three or four phone calls in the last two weeks from residents and when I'm talking to them, as you and I talk.
Sure.
To the same gentleman over in, um, can't think of it right now, uh, on Chambers, invited him to the meeting.
Yes.
And here's what I get from these people every time when I invite them to a meeting. Are you crazy? I work for a living and I cannot attend a meeting at noon. So I did a little research. So seventeen townships that are fairly close to us have meetings and only four, including us, do not meet somewhere between seven, seven thirty to six o'clock at night. Jefferson happens to do one during the day and one at night, one during the day, one at night. It's imperative to, for us to get back to, to have these meetings, at least one a month in the evening so we can draw out more.
Absolutely.
People who live in the township that work. And I understand during COVID that it was said that it was okay to go to these daytime meetings and that seems to where it is and that's explained that this is a working meeting and we're working people and things like that. And my advice is, if, and I'm gonna beat this drum for the next two and a half years, um, is if you're running for trustee and your job affects you from, uh, being able to hold meetings in the evening, maybe being a trustee is not for you.
Me?
Not, not you, sir. I'm saying anyone. Because I did not, I am not saying you because you attended, sir, you've been here twelve years and you had no problem coming to meetings for, for eight to nine years. You, you came to meetings in the evening all the time and I never ever heard you complain about it. And I just say, I'm not even saying this to Jim, I'm just saying, every time I take a call from somebody and I try to get them resolution to their problem, I want them to come in and explain to the other two trustees what's going on. This is what I'm being told. This is why we look out and, and like, I know you've been here, but, but not a super lot, but you're, it was great to see a new face, you know, everything, but most of the time I look out here and I see the same people. I need to get to new blood, new people if we want this township to thrive.
So I'm not opposed to that. And I guess what we need to do when Mr. Leiser's here, like at our next meeting, if this is on the agenda, um, and then we can see where it goes from there.
Well, I brought it up in the past and, and it's been shot down. I think it's just been a few meetings ago that I brought it up. And so I, and I'm not asking for everyone and if we try it.
Sure, if we do one a month and see if it changes in the people that come, you know, one of the good things about is being able to try it and see, um, you know, if, if someone's making a recipe and, you know, it's not quite right, they, they change it or this, and then if that doesn't work, then they go back to the original grandma's recipe. So I'm, I'm not opposed to that at all.
So be, I wanna be clear though, this was never addressed to you or James.
Okay.
This is addressed to what I feel.
Anyone that's, anyone that's want to run for this.
Township needs to move in that direction.
Sure.
And it's, it's my opinion, it's worth what it's worth. It's just the simple fact that you can't tell me that you haven't had people telling you, sir.
Oh, I have.
That they can't come to meetings and because they work.
Right, right. Same people we've talked to.
Okay.
And et cetera. So at this time, I'm gonna open the floor for questions in regards to the meeting.
How about having one meeting a month, like in the, um, evening, like from May to through September? I'm speaking for myself as an old person because when it gets dark, I don't drive after dark. I'll come get you back.
See, and this is good to hear because, I mean, if we was to wanna change it permanently, and I've heard this from other residents that used to sit here in the front, they got to the point where they're no longer driving as much and, and some have deceased. Um, in the summer months, I think that that is something that is a very valid point because of the dark.
Well, I'm speaking for myself.
Sure.
Uh, as far as the after dark, I don't drive after dark anymore.
Right.
You're not the only one.
Yeah.
There's a lot of us. One meeting a month would give, well, there's one lady in particular, I don't remember her name, she, she worked, I think for Mount Carmel or something and when just started having the meetings, you know, here in the afternoon or early afternoon, she couldn't make it because of working.
Sure.
And there's, you know, still younger people that are working and can't come to the noon meeting.
You know, I'm more than happy to change it. I know one time we changed meetings because over the twelve years, I'm on my twelfth year.
We know.
Um, we had the meetings different times, we had five, five thirty, and then one time we changed it and in the winter it is pretty dark, we changed it to six thirty and, um, because someone had a resident, I don't know if they're still a resident or not, but they're like, I can't quite make it, I'm always late getting to the meeting. Well, they were coming to the meeting regular. So we moved it to six thirty and then we never seen them again. And then so we tried, but the biggest thing that Mike is saying, at least if we try it and see what we can do.
If it doesn't work, you can change back.
Exactly. Right, exactly.
But at least give it a try.
I, I'm not opposed to that.
I would think of the six thirty, uh, hours would be the good time, you know, give people time to get, um.
Home from work.
Home from work.
Sure.
So I would think it'd be worth trying.
I agree, I agree. Any other questions? So, sorry, Mary, are you finished? I didn't know, I didn't wanna cut you off.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
So, so we're gonna have to post it to let know, to let people know that there's gonna be a change.
Right.
How are we gonna do that?
Several different ways. One, we would do, and there's not a lot of people that have social media, um, a lot of the regulars that come here, we have ways of contacting either by phone, text, email. Also our, our notice that goes on the door and as well as what goes on Facebook and as well as what goes on our website. So we couldn't take the expense, it's about three thousand dollars to send out a postcard to everybody.
Nice.
So that would be the only option that we wouldn't be able to do. In the future, I'd love to find a grant that we would be, like a lot of other townships that we have a digital sign. I was somewhere, where, I can't remember where we were, but they had a digital sign. I went by this township and it said, meeting such and such, be cautious of storms. And I looked at that twice and I'm like, wow. And it was just in the country in a little township. I'm thinking, why can't we have a digital sign that people could be able to see? And there's many things. And over the years, we've talked about that. So, um, I'm hoping one day we would be able to.
Do it.
No different than hopefully one day we might have microphones. So, I mean, but we have so many issues going on in this township right now that there aren't so many people can work on things at a time. But as we move forward with a lot of stuff that we're doing, I'm hoping that we can implement, implement a lot of these. But that would answer your question. Anyone else before I close the floor? Hearing none, the time is now approximately two oh five and we're adjourned. And thank you, guys. I know it's a little longer than normal. Normally I like to try to keep it an hour and a half.